Good evening and welcome to the September 16th Planning Board meeting. Nancy, please take attendance.
Commissioner Narenhurst.
President.
Commissioner Caramella.
Present.
Commissioner Taliano.
Here.
Commissioner Warman.
Present.
Chairman Leo.
Present. Can we have a vote on the meeting minutes of June 17?
May 20.
June 17? Where's the ... I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
June 7.
June 17.
Yeah, you were here. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm going to ...
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. On our agenda this evening, we have two items. 300 Columbus Avenue and 69 Main Street. Can we start with 69 Main Street? Yes, please, use the microphone. Identify yourself and hold on. Is it on?
I think that's all, that's on now.
Okay.
I'm Peter Jung. I'm a physician. And right now, I have a practice in, at One Elm Street, Tackle. It's old casino building. And I worked in, I worked at Lawrence Hospital, Westchester Medical Center, and another hospital upstate. So what I'm thinking to do is, at 69 Main Street, I'm going to put my practice on the first floor. I think that's good for me and good for the town, too. I think I can, I have, I have a lot of patient around this area already. Because I have been here over past, maybe, let's see, 12 years. Except a few years, I was inside of the hospital. I mean, at Lawrence Hospital, okay? And for me, because I have a patient populations here already, so, and I, I do not have enough time here because I'm renting from other physicians. And wait, for me, the waiting period, period sometimes can be up to two hours, three hours. So I'm going to, that's the reason I'm, I want to move here, so that I can extend my time. I'm going to be here around like a two day, two to three days, okay? And I think that will be good for my patient, because we all, I'm a pain management, and we all grow up and people live longer and longer. And, you know, right now, 70s young, 80s, 90s, it's, it's all over the place. I have so many patients like 80, 90s. I think in, in few years, we, we are going to be over 100, on average. Yet, yet last year, at the 2000s, they did a statistics. They said the, 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 the average for women is 80, was 76. Man was like a 73. But this year, for, after 10 years, the woman's average is 86. Man is 80, ah, man is 86. And that's including the infant or the newborn baby, okay? So we are, we, I have many that's those, those elderly patient, because we all have a pain when we in that age. So I, so when I expand, expand my time here, I can do more, you know, treat more patient, okay? I think it's good for community. That's used to be community health service, though, yeah. So that's one thing. What else should I talk?
Well, why don't you show us the plan, what you're proposing to do?
Okay.
And then we can discuss the issues we discussed earlier.
And should I ask my architect?
Yes, or you can do it, it's up to you. If you could just place the plan on that board over there, I don't know if we have any mag, Bill, do you have any magnets or anything on that board?
Oh, we can hold it.
Okay. Don't break it. You break it, you own it.
My name is Chi Chen. I'm Peter's architect. Basically, when he asked me to apply the certificate, the occupation certificate for him, he said, well, he need to move as soon as possible. So that's why the agent said, well, everything is, is ready. But this one is already one years old, so we still need to check the whole core issue, so start from the zoning. So from the zoning, we did, we did check request for the, by code, request for the four parking space. And I know Peter, he worked very hard to try to find a space in here's. The good things, he finally, he find, he find it. And also, we double-checked with ADA to follow the 2010s. Everything should be update to issue. Result, we try to keep us as the same as, as possible, so.
So why don't, why don't you walk us through the plan? Show us exactly what you're proposing to do, what's existing. Take the microphone with you? And just show us, for example, where the main entrance is going to be. I know you're putting, putting in a handicap ramp. Just, just walk us through the whole process, so that people at home can actually see the, the project that you're proposing.
Sure. This, this office is located in 69 Main Street. And it's a busy street on here, so that's why we have a main entrance, stuff on here, go through the vestivale, and the new, the waiting room, and the reception. And after call out, they will go into the each.
Right, these are, these are all existing office spaces, correct?
Yes.
You're making minimal changes to the space, correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. And then we just updated the ADA for the toilet thing, yeah. And then, then go back. It's a very, very simple.
Okay. So the, the existing handicap toilet, you show, that's existing, correct? You didn't make any modifications, the large one?
Yeah, we, we changed it, we changed it to mid, mid to the 2010, because that requires for the, from the wall to the vestibule, then, to the sink, then, that requires for five feet. So that's why in between they can ...
So this is new work?
Yeah, this is new work, yeah.
Right, because it's, it's a little difficult to kind of depict which is on your plan, which is the new work, which is the existing work.
Okay.
So if we, in the future, if we could just like, you know, poche the walls and just say, you know, this is the, ah...
Yeah, actually, I just make the darker.
Yeah, it's hard to see, I'm getting older, so I need to ...
Okay, sure.
So if you could just poche, so we know exactly what's new and what's existing, right? To make it a little easier on us. So, so the modification is going to be the ADA toilet. Anything else on the interior side, other than some carpet you said, and some, ah...
Yeah, just do, do the carpet, change the carpet, and also repaint the wall, and may, maybe a little bit of, the patch, yeah, the wall, yes.
So basically, the, the office space will remain as is, and with the exception of the handicap bathroom that you're going to be modifying, on the interior side, you're not going to make any, any additional modifications, correct? Okay. So now, let's talk about the handicap ramp.
Okay, yeah, let's...
So, the code, you know, you have a step at, at the, at the street level, from some, from the sidewalk, from the public sidewalk to your platform, there's a, depending, from the lowest point, it's approximately five to six inches, to the high point, where it's probably a little over a foot something, right? Because the, the Main Street slopes down.
Yes, a little down.
So in order to comply with ADA codes, you're going to have to put in a, a handicap ramp. And you show one here.
Yes.
Now, one of the things that, prior to this meeting, we all took a site visit to look at the handicap ramps, the proposal, the handicap ramp.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that we're not sure is where is the location of the property line for your building and the adjacent building. So we need, we need a, a site survey, which basically indicates where the, your building starts and ends, so the property. So the idea is, you know, you, you have to place the handicap ramp on your property. Ideally, it'd be great if, you know, for example, the, your, your neighbor's property is stopped, is on a lot line, and you have a perfect location for the handicap ramp. However, if it's not there, you're going to have to scoot over to the left a little bit, and it, it requires a little more work, so...
Yeah, we're interested.
Right, so we, we need that information before we can actually make a, a, a decision. Secondly, you have to come up with four parking spaces. And we also had that discussion, right, with the parking spaces.
Yeah. Do you want to show to the chairman?
I'm sorry, what is it?
The parking, the owner?
Yeah, the, the issue, as Mr. Williams brought up, and, and Mr. Williams, if you could come up and just talk a little bit about it, is that the person you've acquired four parking spaces from may not be able to lease you the four parking spaces. Even though he has them, he may not have the, the right to do so at this time. He may have to make a modification to his, his application to allow him to lease you the four parking spaces. So that's, that's a little tricky process. If you could just kind of educate us all on this?
Yes, Mr. D'Agostino has a lot, but on his application, he writes that he charges no fees of any kind.
And how many parking spaces are available there?
Well, he says he only has seven vehicles.
And of course, there's, it's a larger lot, and it seems like he has ...
Right, it's a larger lot, we need to know how many units he has of residential, how many square feet he has of retail, so we can calculate the numbers, and then see if there are any spots left over that would be available after he amends or changes his license.
Right. So technically, it stands right now, he doesn't have any right to lease four spaces.
Correct, his license doesn't permit that.
Right, that's, that's the, the issue that we're faced with, with the parking spaces. Any questions from your end, Gary?
No, I'll do it all, to what Mr. Williams said, I think we ...
I don't think your mic is on.
Is it on now? Okay, so I want to, we want to make sure that the parking spaces that you're leasing, that you're able to lease. Once Mr. Williams confirms that Mr. D'Agostino can lease those spaces to you, if you can provide the building department with a copy of the lease, and I'll be able to take a look at that for the board, and make sure that's in order.
Okay, but I, I think this is some fundamental issues that the, now Mr. D'Agostino has to address before he can actually legally lease those issues.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, and I'm hearing, ah, it sounds to me like we have to, somebody has to contact Mr. D'Agostino first, and then...
Well, send them a letter.
Then Doc, then Dr. Zhang can be brought into the picture. I think you need to get your foundation laid with Mr. D'Agostino, and, and, you know, be sure that he's capable of doing something before you ask for Dr. Zhang, I think, for a copy of the lease, obviously.
Well, right, once Mr. Williams, I believe, confirms that Mr. D'Agostino can do that, then I would need a copy of the lease, after that.
Yeah, the first plan of attack is Mr. D'Agostino, so to speak.
Or other sources. I know you went around and, and asked other owners for, for parking spaces, and I, I know you've had some issues. I know you even checked with the village. They've made me aware that they don't have any spaces available. But, you know, the code requires that at this point, you have four parking spaces. So we're going to ask you to continue to look at this time, so, and hopefully, either resolve with Mr. D'Agostino, or potentially, if there's other owners that have parking spaces that are, that are leasable, you know, to try to acquire those, if you can.
Bill? Is there a way he would know which are, for example, the medical building, if they are licensed to lease these specs? Is there a way he would know, is there a list that he can go to, that you have, that are the people that are licensed?
Parking lot licenses are maintained by the clerk's office.
And so is it possible he could go there and find out who is licensed?
We could try to ask them, I don't know if they would have that readily available, because there's probably hundreds of licenses that we have.
Because I'm afraid he's going to go to all these other places, and they're not licensed as well. And I don't want him wasting his time.
Right.
I, I believe the easiest way would be for Mr. D'Agostino to confirm the number of residential units. A square footage of retail space will develop the number required, see how many he has, and what he has left over. That should take a day or so.
Okay, so...
But in addition to that, does Mr. D'Agostino have to come before you?
Oh, yeah, we're going to have to get him to come back to the clerk's office and amend his...
Correct.
...application, to show that he's charging a fee.
And how long does it generally take to do that?
Probably a couple of days only.
So, I know, because I don't want to, you know, prolong this, I want to get him in business and...
Well, it really would be Mr., whatever Mr. D'Agostino does. I'm sure it's something we could handle relatively quickly if he comes in and does what he's supposed to do.
Okay. And we don't have any other locations that he can try to find some additional parking spaces?
No, did you try the gentleman on the corner? It's, um, no, the gentleman right up here on this side, on the corner.
I went there, but I, there's nobody who was at home. But I went to the other side, and I'm walking that, on the, along that, like, along that street. I do not have space, and I do not have any luck, and on this area either.
Right.
So I'm walking that way, and find out there's a four, four hour...
Want you to come to the microphone? Come to the microphone?
Yeah, I have been driving around and walking around this area, okay? First place I went was medical building. The, they basically tell me no, but they are not 100% sure, because the owner was in Europe, okay? So there's a chance there, but the chance is not high, okay? I also drive around and walking around to Main Street on the, on that way, toward White Plains Road. Two blocks, three blocks away, there's a free parking lot there. There's a free street parking, you know, close to the, to the, to the gas station. And I also walking along the, the road, Cameron Road or something, the church, between the church and the, and my building, okay? I walked that way, and I talked with all the, the resident there, I knocked the door, and there's no lock there, okay? And I talked with the church. They also said they do not rent it, because they're, 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 they're high up, somebody high up said no, okay? So I, I went to the, the owner, the dealer, I talked with them, called owner, and then I talked with the other, you know, other buildings, owner, I'm trying to find the parking lot. There's no lock, I only got the lock from Bob, from Robert, okay? And then I also driving around this way, the, the, that way, okay? I think I drive, drive about five or 10 blocks, that's a two hours parking. So there's, there's no way I can park there or something. And I talked with some resident, they have a problem parking, too, because the two-hour parking in front of them, their, their property, if they have extra cars, they may have a problem to park there, too. So the problem is right now, the parking. I can park whenever, you know, I, I worked, I worked in city, I worked in, in Queens, you know? I do not mind to walk, okay? I can walk five blocks, 10 blocks, there's not a problem there. So for my staff, I don't think that's, that's a problem. So if we have, read, by the code, we have to have a parking space. But, you know, if not by the code, then I can walk, there's no problem with me, and my staff can walk to three blocks, not big deal. So right now, I'm stuck, so I do not know what to do.
Well, we, we have two issues that we really got to address. One is, again, is the parking, which is, seems difficult. And the second one is the, a survey showing, you know, the, the property lines, and also the location of the handicap ramp, the proposed handicap ramp, so... So if at all possible, if you could have that back to us by our next workshop, hopefully, you'll have some more luck with acquiring parking spaces. And then, what's the, if he can't find any parking spaces, does he have to go to zoning for a variance?
That was my thought.
Yeah, that would most likely be the, the case, correct? So then you have to go to zoning and then come back here.
Right, so, so the reality is, we as a board cannot waive the, the, the need for the four parking spaces. That, I think, is the preview of the zoning board, correct?
Correct.
All right, so if you cannot find your four parking spaces, your next step is to go to the zoning, find the zoning board, and ask for hardship, and explain to them what, what's happening, and see if they either reduce it or potentially eliminate it. I'm not sure what they, what they're going to be able to do.
Have you spoken to the people who own that medical building on Main Street?
Well, the owner was, the owner was in...
I talked with them already, yeah. I think there's, this, this is two issues. I think before I move in, I can take care of them, okay? For the parking, I can walking around again. I do not mind to do it, okay? But I feel something there. I do not know. Okay, so that's number one. I hope, just, not just because of this, you know, you can, you, we have to wait for another month. That's number one. Number two, for the handicapped access, the ramp, okay? I can got survey, there's no problem with that, okay? I have no problem to get a survey. But what if a survey said, okay, your property line is your building line? Then we can, we have to put a parking there, put a ramp there, in my side, okay? So that's one option. But what if they said, my, my property line is on the other building side? Then I can do the, I can use that ramp?
Yeah, if, if, I think the handicap ramp is not a big issue. I, I think it's, you know, it's doable, it's just deciding the location of where to place the ramp. I think your bigger issue at this point is your parking spaces.
Now, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
What if I cannot get parking spot, space?
I just explained that to you. What was going to happen is, we cannot relieve you of that obligation. The next step is for you to go in front of the zoning board, which is a separate board, and then you're going to explain your hardship, and say, I, I went around, I, I didn't find any, anyone to lease me parking spaces. You know, I have this building, I want to be able to use it, and potentially, they may relieve you of the need for four parking spaces, or just say, maybe get one parking space, or, I don't know what they're going to say, to be quite honest with you.
You're talking, yeah, you're talking potential. What if they said no? Then what I'm going to do?
That, I, I don't know.
I think we need to cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah.
That's, we're going a little far out right now.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think the objective is...
I really need advice from you, what if saying, if they say no?
I mean, you could always Article 78 if he has to, right? I, I don't know.
But that's again...
Yeah, it's, it's a longer process. I don't think any, listen, I don't think anyone is looking to, um, to hurt you, or, or to, to stop you from doing, doing what you want to do. I don't think that's the intent. The intent is, you know, to do this all legally. And to try, you know, if there's a hardship, we'll try to, try to help you with the hardship. I don't think anyone's out to, you know, to, to give you a difficult time.
I understand that part. I, I know, I talked with all of you already, and I know you are really trying to help, too. Give me some idea, because I have no clue where I'm going to pa, find a parking lot.
Right.
This is not my specialty, by the way.
Right.
So, you know...
Dr. Zhang, if I might, um, I've taken a look at some of the last year's worth of decisions that came out of the zoning board, and without promising, because I cannot, I would say that there's a strong chance that if you make your case the way you've made it to us, that you will receive some, some grace, shall I say, some, some disposition, some assistance. I don't know how much, but I think there's a very strong chance. It is worth the try. They are fairly sympathetic, and your situation is, is a pretty tight situation. So it's, you're making a case for hardship. You don't have to embellish it at this point, it's, it's real. So I would, while we, none of us can promise, the, the history that, of their decisions so far, I would tell you suggests that you will receive some, some assistance from them, and that you should not be terribly worried, but at least, you know, maybe mildly worried. I think you might see at least a reduction in numbers of spaces that you need to come up with. I would also suggest that if there's any kind of list you could get yourself on, I don't know if we have a list.
You mean waiting list?
Waiting list. Put your name on it right away, because if the zoning board does say, grant you a reduction of one or two spaces, at least you have a chance to acquire the additional spaces and, and sort of get yourself out of that zoning variance situation at a certain point in the future. So you might want to think of it that way.
You know, I know you're, you're anxious to start business, too, there, and move in. And I was wondering, is it worth his while to try to get on the zoning board for next? And he can always pull himself off, if he gets the...
I don't know if the fees associated with that, I'm not sure what the process is, so...
Bill?
Yeah, so I, I think the next step is really to, to try and, and work with the, the person you've been dealing with, D'Agostino, with, with the parking space, see if he'll, you know, feel, do the process of actually, you know, changing his parking license to what it, what it's, probably what it should be. And probably that's your best bet, and then I would go back to the medical building and just see, because they do have parking spaces, and hopefully then, they'll rent you something. I, I think you have some options, either way. Either if you don't get, get the, the parking spaces or the zoning board, I think you still have options, you know?
Yeah, two more questions.
Please.
Number one, can I pay some money for the, for the, for the parking? For example, I, you know, my real estate agent told me, at White Plains, even you do not have a parking spot, you can just pay some monies there.
I don't know what the policy is here, yes. I know, I know other, other villages and other towns do do that. In lieu of, of not having parking spaces, they'll pay a fee to the village for the parking, for, for parking, basically.
I don't, I don't know if the history of that in, in our village, and I don't think...
We do not have that, okay. The second question. After Bill talked with the, the owner of the property, and, and confirmed, we really have, he really have a full parking space for rent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have to come for next meeting, waiting for another month for next meeting? Or you can give me something there, said, hey, if I got the, got the parking spaces there, and you can, I can start the work now?
You're going to have to come back to the next meeting, unfortunately.
Because you got, you need the survey.
Yeah, you need the survey for one. I mean, that's not, not the big deal, but the parking spaces can become a bigger deal. If he doesn't, if, you know, the, the owner of the property doesn't want to go through a process, then you're stuck, and you're going to have to go to the zoning board unless you find other places. So there's, there's too many variables for us to do that, that's the only issue. If it was a little more clean cut, yes, I'd give you, you know, we'd, we'd consider a, a partial approval, or a conditional approval, but again, there's, there's too many variables here. That's my only concern. I, I understand that, and I don't want to frustrate you, but, you know, that's, that's the reality.
I think my architect has something to say.
Yeah, I, I know my client, he is very eager to have a start of business here, so that's why, about the handicap ramp, actually, in drawing, I already show in our property, no matter is in wholesale or not, we, no matter what, we always want to build the, the handicap. So that's why it's, and also, like our client, he said, the owner of a parking, if he give him the later, with the four, yeah, so that's why, I say maybe if later they check, they really have this for parking lot, it's possible can have a, like a conditional, the proof. So, so after we, we can put the whole document, you know, the later, at least he can start, like, do the painting, that kind of stuff, carpeting things. So as long as, well, if we need...
Yeah, Mr. Williams, do you have a second, please? Can you come up? That's what I'm asking. So I, I guess the question, what they're saying is, that we realize that, you know, they still have some hurdles to overcome, okay? So the question is, could they, if, I don't say conditional approval, but can we, can you give them some sort of a, a, I want to say permit either, but can, can you give them some sort of approval to start, let's say, doing some cosmetic work, without a building permit? I don't, can you?
No, they, they can paint and do carpet without a permit.
Right.
The only thing that requires a permit is the ramp and the bathroom.
And the bathroom, correct. So, so you can do, it's your building, you could do some work on the interior side. The only two things you really can't do is, is the handicap bathroom, which is going to require a plumber, electrician, and all that good stuff, and the handicap ramp, so you could start doing some work in your building, but it'd be limited in scope.
So this way, so we're, in the drawing, we already showed the ramp, so can we start to do the ramp?
No. You need to know what your property line is first, before you do the ramp, so, you know, yeah. Unless you want to take apart your, your, your platform and, and put it on, you know, your edge of the building, I mean, that's...
You don't even know if the stairs are in, or the property are in the right or what.
Yeah, so at this point, I think we, there's just too many, that's the issue. If it was a, a little cleaner, we can give you the conditional approval, but unfortunately, this is a, it's a little more complicated. All right, so I'm going to suggest that you guys come back. We, the workshop is in two, two, three weeks, I think, and the next meeting is, is in October, so, yeah. Unfortunately, that's the best we could do at this time. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, 300 Columbus?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is Les Maron, Maron and Mazanti, 5 Westchester Avenue, Poundridge, New York. Uh, I'm here this evening for Crestwood Station Plaza, the project at 300, uh, dash 08 Columbus Avenue. Uh, also, I have Norman Cox, who's the architect for the project, and Elizabeth Shipley from Mr. Cox's office. My clients had hoped to be there, be here. Apparently, we had a scheduling mix-up, so I'm, I'm not expecting them, but I can reach them if absolutely necessary. Crestwood Plaza took over the project from Streetworks. There had been approvals by your board for site plan and architectural review in 2012, including the elevations and the architectural approvals. It appears, based on the analysis of my client, that the plans, the architectural review renderings they were giving to you may have been, for, for lack of a better explanation, smoke and mirrors, where it didn't look like, they, they may have been done a lot of things to make this board happy and to make the, the photos and the elevations look good, but it didn't look like they were gonna work construction-wise. Mr. Cox was, was brought onto the project to actually design the building and to, to do the structural as well as the interior work, which none of that work had been done. So, basically, they had construct, they had designed a facade without doing what was behind it. And there was, apparently wasn't a lot of thought given to that. So, Mr. Cox was brought on board to, board to do that. In addition to the, the issue where they hadn't really done any work on the inside to, to fit the outside, the client has, has determined to go ahead with modular construction, where in other words, boxes and units are gonna be brought to the site. So, that makes another, causes another reason to, that it affects the, the nature of the plan, even though they would've been affected even if they did stick build. I've been informed that they decided to go modular because, uh, these days, it's a more cost-effective, both for time and, and effort way of construction. If they were to stick build this project, it would probably be 18 months of construction and endless interruption of that neighborhood and the station area and people needing places to park, the contracts, et cetera. With the modular, basically, the modular boxes get built off-site, delivered there, and then they're installed in probably a matter of weeks that, that they're brought in. Uh, and after they're installed, the entire facade of the building is built on-site. So, the, and that's the elevations that we're looking at is something that's not done in a factory. It's not done somewhere else. It's actually gonna be done here in Tuckahoe with, with the materials that were already, the materials and the colors, they were already approved in your prior approval. So, the, we're seeking to amend the architectural approvals, the architectural review approvals. Uh, Mr. Cox has been brought on board. We had a very productive work session with this board last week or two weeks ago. Uh, Mr. Cox had made, made some changes, which he's submitted to you. And that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Norman. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Norman Cox. I'm the architect with Frank Gottsegen Cox Architects. And we're the architects who were hired to carry this project forward from the originally approved, uh, design that just went through the planning board a couple of years ago. We, uh, part of our work, as, as Les said, was to take what was essentially a sort of a sketchy elevation and to make that a buildable building. And what, one of our goals was to try to stay as faithful as possible to the original, uh, the original aesthetic of the building. We were careful to maintain the same materials. All the materials we're using are the same materials that were originally approved. The massing of the building is identical to the original massing. The fenestration of the building is almost identical. It is identical with respect to, um, the spacing and the general proportions of the windows on the Columbus Street, Columbus Avenue side and the Lincoln Avenue side. We've made some minor modifications on the two side elevations and on the rear elevations in consideration of the, the actual, uh, interiors of the buildings. So, I'd like to just run through the project, you know, sort of facade by facade, just to, you know, to sort of point out how we've maintained the original design and also just to, uh, bring your attention to some of the minor changes we've made. So, the, the Columbus Avenue elevation, we've been careful to retain the overall proportions and the window patterns. We are going to be retaining the crestwood decorative sign, as was originally designed. We have the, uh, what we think were tile, recessed tile panels in the piers. Not clear from the original drawings, but, uh, they seem to be similar to the tile panels. We know we're on the side elevation, so we think those are tile panels. There are planters here in our scheme, just as in the original scheme. Some of the major elements, uh, this kind of tile mansard roof, we've, I think I lost, okay. The button there. Brick colors, a lighter colored brick, a more red brick.
You break it, you own it.
Huh?
You break it, you own it.
Nice microphone, I, I own that. Anyway, um-
Just, Norman, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The plant, the elevation you have there versus the elevation we have shows the right side portion of, of the elevation. You have is a red brick.
Yes, that was an error I discovered at the last minute. It should be this color. If you look at the original drawings that I sent two or three weeks ago, you'll see that was that color. My apologies on that. Like I said, the intention is to use all the same materials in the same places, as in the original Streetworks design. So, um, sometimes you lose track of rendering on these things, you know, so. So, that, that pretty much covers the, the Columbus elevation. One of the comments that, you know, we heard during the work session was not to lose the ornament on the top of the turret. So, we've restored that ornament. The ornament we're showing here is a little more modest than the original ornament. I think, in our opinion, the original ornament was a little bit over the top. And I think, you know, for a building of this character, it would be better if it was a little more reserved. So, that's why we've shown something more regular at a somewhat smaller scale.
Before you, before you leave, I'm sorry, before you leave this elevation, can you talk about the entrance to the building? Cause I know in your previous application, you didn't have a, a canopy over. And now it looks like, I'm not sure what you have, to be quite honest, cause there's no, no documentation here.
Well, we do have a canopy. You can see it's represented by this heavier shadow that comes in there.
What is it, what kind of a canopy? Cause I don't see it in the section either.
It's, uh- Uh, no, it projects out pretty much at a horizontal plane. It's clad in aluminum, as in the original design.
I don't think it's the same as the original design. But, okay.
Okay, we, we don't really have very good documentation of the original design, other than the elevations and some 3D. Thank you.
I think I shared this one with you at our, at our workshop. It's slightly different than what you're showing. It's tapered up and-
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah. Well, we can, we can do that, you know. We're, we're happy to reproduce that pattern. Like I say, our intention is to, is to reproduce as much as possible the elements that were previously approved. So, I see that that canopy has a slightly tapered soffit, uh, so we can, we can do that.
Also has a design panel above the door. I don't know that yours indicates that or that you've, you've given us a fairly spare rendering, so.
The, above the door is a series of transoms. It's a-
He's got, they also have a decorative panel, you know, this decorative panel above the transom, above the-
Okay.
And it's a little over the top, but I would, could accept-
And the scale seems different than yours, I guess, I'm, I'm the same.
I think what we did was we lifted the doors up to be a little taller, considering that that was the, a main entrance to the building. Those doors look rather squat to me. Looks like they're-
I think they're at least seven feet for sure.
Well, seven feet, I think, is a little-
Seven possibly, it looks like eight, actually.
Be nicer if they were eight feet, for a main entrance to the building. So, I, I would suggest that you could, you could lose that decorative panel in the interest of having slightly larger doors. And, you know, we still do have the transom above it. And it'll make the entrance more transparent so that the lobby can be seen.
Can, can, all right, I, I just wanna go back to that, you know, eventually. Because I think it's an important feature of the building.
Okay.
So, we should look at that a little more closely after you finish your presentation.
Um, might I pick up on this Columbus Avenue with the ornament? What is that going to be, material fabrication wise? Is that, is that a metal panel?
No, but I think your mic is on.
We, we see the ornament as being a, a, a pre-cast panel, what's called GFRC. It's a glass fiber reinforced concrete. So, it looks sort of like stone. And it's a product that you can cast, you know, ornamental relief into.
Right, as opposed to a metallic look, which is my less favorite choice if I get a choice.
I think it's more appropriate to use a masonry type material.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, right. So, that, that's our intention is to-
Yeah, metallic would be second or third choice if I get a choice.
I mean, that, that's pretty much true for all of this trim. It's all pre-cast trim, so it-
And the, uh, the portion that juts out above it, that's also gonna be the pre-cast stone?
Yes. Yeah.
And all the trim across the tops?
All pre-cast, yes.
Okay.
So, it reads more like masonry.
And the window framing?
The windows are, um, when you say the framing, do you mean the window, it's, or trims around?
The trims are, well, on the ground floor, what, what's probably gonna be retail, which-
storefront is a, is aluminum with a painted finish, uh, similar to, I mean, that's exactly what was in the Streetworks scheme. So, it's the same color.
I know. She said with sadness in her voice, she-
You'd like to see wood framing, yeah, well.
Aluminum never looks good after a couple of years. I think we all pretty much have to concede that. But you're saying it's aluminum. And along, toward the, for, toward the Lincoln Avenue side with the turret, that's also, that's gonna be carried through aluminum everywhere?
These are aluminum frame windows. And then these are regular double-hung windows, the same, same type of window as these.
And all the windows on the facade are gonna be aluminum?
Right now, they're actually, um, it's a fiberglass material.
Is it?
Which is a, you know, it's like a very, a very durable material, so it doesn't, uh-
It won't have the, the metallic sheen that aluminum can have and the-
It does have a coating on it, so, you know, it's got a coating. It doesn't have the high reflectivity of aluminum, but it is slightly reflective.
I'm concerned that it looks cheap. I would hope that it doesn't look cheap.
Um, these windows are made by Marvin. They're not cheap windows, you know, they're good quality windows, so I'm, you know, not-
Bring us samples of the material so we can see, some, some of these things don't read off the samples of the material. And I think as, as Commissioner Aliano said, I, those details can make a big difference.
Right, right. Well, I do have a sample of the material with me, of that, of that window material.
Good, good.
We could look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I mean, I think I understand the fiberglass fabrication.
But this also is ridiculous, those colors.
I think he's trying, he's trying to replicate what he did here.
Yeah, but I wanna just make sure, because this is ridiculous. And then what did he say? These, these are gonna be, isn't that glass? Okay. Was he saying like?
That's the, this is the actual material that clads in the window. The window is of what's called a protruded fiberglass, and so it's extremely durable.
Well, this is the window frame.
It's the window, yes, what the window is made of, not the window casing, where we have casing. So, that's, that's a piece of roof. Yes, that's that material.
And, and-
The reason I bring it up, Mr. Cox, and, and I know you're extremely skilled, is that over ti- I mean, when you look at architecture, oftentimes, the window will, will make the piece. And oftentimes, the window can take away from a beautiful building. You know, we've seen a lot of beautiful buildings in Manhattan. We do their windows, and somehow, it just doesn't hold up in terms of consistency in the look. So, I'm hoping that we can do the best we possibly can with the window materials and fabrication for that very reason. I, it would be horrible to have a beautiful building and have windows that, that don't rise to the level of the building.
Well, I'd like to point out that these windows will be similar in proportion to the windows on the buildings we designed on Main Street, which are all very good-looking windows.
Yeah, they're pretty good.
You know, one of the risks of a cheap window is that the mullions are kind of heavy and clunky. And I think that's what we wanna avoid in this building. We don't really want, like, a cheap window with a heavy, clunky mullion. So, you-
Character too. A window creates character in a, in a design. So, that's kind of where, that's my bent. That's where, that's the angle I, I tend toward.
Well, understood, and I agree with you. And I think we, we tried very, very hard to, you know, to select windows and to do the mullion patterings that are appropriate for the, for the nature of this building.
Okay.
Before, again, before we leave this elevation, just on the left-hand side before the turret, uh, there's a, a column there. I'm not sure what that column is. I don't remember, I don't, to be quite honest, I don't remember a column being there.
Yes, that is in the original Streetworks design.
It looks like a lamppost, to be quite honest with you.
Well, if, if you look carefully, you'll see behind the lamppost, there is a sort of a traditional column.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's there.
Well, neither am I, but I would pers- I would personally like to take it out, except-
You should, actually.
Very good, thank you.
However, you placed, you placed the louvers above here, and I'm assuming that's mechanical required, right?
The louvers are required because we have to take our fresh air and we have to exhaust to the street side. It's not permitted to have these louvers on the parking lot side. So, yes, those louvers will be the same finish as the, the window wall. So, because they're deeply set into the, to the facade and they'll be in shadow, I, I think those will be pretty minimal in appearance. Can I just go back to that column for one minute? I, I think an appropriate replacement for the column would be just a simple cylindrical column or even a rectangular column, cause I, I do think we need something there. Because this span would look odd without some kind of support.
Could be a pier rather than a column?
Uh, yes, it could be, and that would be quite nice.
Wanna replicate that same stone? I'm assuming that stone is varied, varied beige pattern. It's not gonna be a solid beige or it's gonna be-
Um, I have that stone here, if you'd like to see it.
What do you think about putting this, this stone here?
Yeah, that's fine, that's the column.
It'll be consistent.
I don't remember seeing a column.
Well, it's there, it's just not obvious.
This is the stone. It's actually a, it's a, it's a man-made product. It simulates a field stone. And, you know, it, it's, it's pretty rough, so it has a pretty tough, you know, character.
So, it'll give it shadow and, and, uh-
Yeah, it'll give it a nice, you know, a nice base. Like I said earlier, this building has quite a fair amount of texture to it. Cause there, you know, the walls move in and out, there's a lot of window openings.
Well, that's what makes it interesting and visually, visually a, a challenge in a good way to look at. And I, and I think that's a good thing for a building. You want somebody to be looking, I actually think you want people to be looking at a building. And if you give them stuff to look at, you will engage them. And somehow, that building will speak to them. And, and I really do think that's important.
I agree, I agree with that. So, yes, we could, we could create another pier here. And, uh, I, I think that would be an improvement too. That column seems very anomalous to me.
And over here.
Correct, anytime you see this pattern. Can I see the stone for a second?
The border above the windows would also be the same, the stone.
I, I don't think the original samples looked as, um-
This is the actual material that was spec'd, actually, yeah.
I like it.
Art of stone?
It, it, I think it does come with a smoother-
With dark, Canyon Bluff, what is that? It is Canyon Bluff, it is art of stone?
Canyon Buff.
But it's a different manufacturer, right?
Aris Craft.
Right. This is, uh, Aris Stone.
Yeah, I think Aris Craft and Aris Stone are essentially the same thing.
Just, again, I could be wrong, but it just seems, it doesn't seem as textured as the one you have in your possession.
My guess is that that's a piece of clip art that they took from somewhere and put it-
I imagine, yeah.
Uh, this product does come in different textures, so-
I think it's a little, to, to me, it just feels a little rough.
I wanna see a different, I mean, well- I want to see a different, I mean, I'll concede only after seeing it, seriously. I'll, I would end up-
I wouldn't object to a slightly smoother texture.
Yeah, I, I think, I'd like to revisit that one if you can.
Alright.
And you know those green panels you have?
Yes.
What are they made of?
Well, we were guessing slightly on that, because we, we believe the intention was to have a ceramic decorative tile-
It was a glazed tile.
A glazed tile, reassessed in the panel, and we, we make that assumption because it occurs on the side elevations, on the original design.
From the original applicant, what we discussed is that would be glazed tile, we'd kind of handmade tile, and it would be kind of in that color venue that they had presented, which I think is not really representative on your drawing yet.
It's probably a little too even in our drawing.
Yeah, it had more of an iridescent type look and feel to it, which-
We saw no specs for that.
No, there was no specs, you know, they would have, I think we talked about them coming back.
Bringing something, yeah, that, we can do that too, you know, we can come in-
Just irrigated coloring of panel.
Right.
Can you bring us samples as well of that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we're, you know, there's literally thousands of tiles on the market, so we can-
Also, the crestwood at the top.
I think it's the same issue there, yeah, I, I think the way it's represented here, I think it's really selecting the, the appropriate tile.
I mean, the colors are really not appropriate.
Well, these are the colors that were on the original, I mean, as close as we could match them, so.
That's fine, but I think, I think we could table that and-
Yeah, but if you'll bring samples of what will be, so that we-
Sure, I mean, for some of the items that we could not positively identify, we're happy to come back and say, okay, look, here's, you know, here's some tiles, red colors. I personally would like to tone that down a little bit myself.
But I guess that doesn't make-
Also, the windows that you have to the left of the entrance, these are looking into the lobby of the building?
Yes, they are, right, that's a, that's a lobby seating area there.
The font on crestwood is a little different.
And, and the font on the crestwood is slightly different than, just look at that.
Again, that's something we'll have to, you know, we couldn't find their font on our Adobe Illustrator, so had to make do. Can I move over to the Lincoln?
No.
No, okay.
Still missing that trellis or whatever we have on, on the right-hand side above, so, I know you had something.
I picked up the side elevation. I didn't draw it on here.
Yeah, I saw that you did. Let's move on to the next page.
Lincoln Avenue elevation, one of the biggest changes we talked about in the work session was at the, at the east end of the building, where we had, we had originally changed this to be a two-story brick element, so that we could flank the center with similar walls. We changed it back more towards what Streetworks had originally had, since that seemed to be a cherished element on that.
Yeah, your paneling's slightly different, but if you can-
One reason the paneling's different is because Streetworks has two windows and we have three windows.
No, it's above the windows, it's slightly different.
Uh, Streetworks paneling up here doesn't really logically turn, so we made sure ours logically turned the corner. Yes, it is slightly different, they had a sort of a heavier, heavier-
Yeah, I also, I also want to ask you a general question. When we met at the workshop, we talked about the, the height of the sill, the window sill. Has that changed since our last discussion?
Uh, we've-
Were you able to lower it somewhat?
We did lower it slightly.
So, what is the current?
The windows are seven feet six.
Right.
So, and the sill is about fifteen, fifteen to sixteen inches.
So, sixteen sill?
Fifteen to sixteen, so that, that puts the sill about here.
Yeah.
Right, and the window height is, you know, seven feet six somewhere.
So, it's nine feet.
Yeah, it's about nine feet. The, the head of the window is just slightly under nine feet, it's about eight feet ten.
Alright, that's the lowest it can go, right?
It's the lowest practical it can go. One reason is limitations on the windows. Windows come in certain maximum sizes, and then, once we get beyond that, we can't really make the window bigger, we can make the transom bigger, but I don't think that'll look good, to make the transom big. So, it's a big window, and there are three of them together, so it's quite, you know, it's quite a, it's quite a hefty piece of transparency in each, in each unit. This drawing shows the, you know, the ornamentation on the turret coming around. We restored a couple of small details that we had eliminated in our original reworking in order to, you know, be more faithful to the Streetworks design. We pushed the peak of this large dormer down so that it matches the height of the main We also represent, you may not have it in yours, but in, in this, we represent that these were, as far as we could tell, these were planting panels, so there's a, so it's a blank panel of foundation wall with in front of it a grid that the planting can grow up, so we, we have that here too.
That was the idea.
Right. I don't think there's anything else of note on this elevation.
Can I just throw this out there for, for those of, for all of us here, are we thinking, and I'm talking to my board, are we thinking the base of that turret is substantial enough, grounded enough visually, or does that look awfully delicate, imperatively delicate to you for the entire piece, the entire?
No, I, I think because the, the Lincoln Avenue raises up, I think it's, it's more pronounced on the Columbus Avenue elevation, but as the, as we turn the corner, the street goes up, so it kind of cut that down a little bit, I, I think it's fine.
You do?
Yeah, I think it's fine. I'm just more concerned about the material itself, I think, just like the texture of the material is very heavy.
Especially in those, in those fairly narrow bands between the windows, it's pretty, pretty blocky.
Yeah.
I, I think, I kind of agree that this could be, these windows could be slightly slimmed, and to make these slightly heavier, I sort of agree with that.
Is that because it's, you know, it's in elevations, it's a rounded turret, is that because?
Even I know that-
Well, we were, you know, again, we were matching the Streetworks plan, Streetworks-
Well, when you did it in plan though, did it look like a small window? I mean, you're, you're not sharing plans with us, so I'm not sure what it looks like.
Uh, no, the windows aren't small, they're like, you know, almost, they're thirty inches wide, it's not a small window.
Thirty inches by almost seven foot six, right?
Seven feet six, yeah.
So, it's a very narrow, tall window.
And this, this opens into the lobby as well, so the seating area in the lobby is here. It certainly would not be harmed by the windows being slightly narrower, giving that base a little bit more mass.
Yeah, more gravitas.
So, at that point, you would have to, for example, eliminate a window row vertically, so you could give the space to the other windows, is that what you do?
No, no, I would just make all these windows slightly narrower, so that the masonry pier between them is slightly larger.
But then it would affect the second and third piers, and-
No, I, I would leave these, and these windows would line up, they would still be aligned, but this window would be slightly smaller. I mean, we're only talking maybe four inches, just enough to give that masonry wall between them a little bit more weight.
It's already, it's already narrow, that's my only concern, it's thirty inches, I mean, it's a small, narrow, narrow and tall window.
There are a lot of them and they all serve one room, so, you know.
Point is, what?
So, you want every, you want-
No, I was just agreeing, you had commented that you thought these looked narrow, and I, I agree, that they do look a little narrow.
I was actually, yeah, well, you see it as a narrow window, I see it as a narrow pier between them.
That's what I meant, the narrow pier. I was agreeing with you about the narrow pier.
What's the width of the pier, do you, do you have a sense what it is, this one?
Uh, it's about a foot, not much more than a foot, so it's-
The foot between the windows?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably, no. What, is this a three hundred sixty on this?
Not quite three sixty, I mean, it comes around, you know, like-
Two seventy, maybe?
Two seventy?
Closer, two seventy.
Between, and they're thirty inch wide?
Yeah.
What do you think?
I think it's, I think it's fine, I would leave it.
Yeah, I think it might be fine, maybe I'm just being too, too-
Yeah, I, I think it's the-
I actually think it would look better with slimmer windows and thicker pier.
And a wider pier?
I do.
There's a lot of windows there, it's like ten windows.
Would it be terrible for you to draw it like that, so we get at least a visual representation the next time?
Uh, I can draw it like that, sure, yeah.
At least we can get a visual representation, and our imaginations can take it from there.
Shall we do, go onto the sides?
Yes, please.
Okay, first we have the southwest elevation. Southwest elevation, which is the elevation next to the restaurant, and has the, the narrow walkway that goes through it. So here we've restored the planting wall, although there are some notable differences between the Streetworks composition and ours. I think the basic intent is similar, we wanted to, you know, we wrapped the brick around the corner from Columbus, we have a section of planting wall here, we've put the brackets with a hanging light fixture back, there's four of those, and we have a, you know, some, a sort of a trellis-like element that projects off the buildings, a, a small amount here. Keep in mind that that walkway is only six feet wide, so it's quite a narrow space. The, the window pattern here is largely dictated by the, by the module, so we're, we're pretty much constrained by that.
What's happening on the, on the other side, because it's-
This is a hallway, actually, this is the bathroom in the, in the module. Where is that?
With no window?
Yes, that's correct. The module goes from here to here, and there's a bathroom in here.
And the bathroom doesn't have a window?
I can't remember why we didn't put a bathroom, it might be because of the fixtures are on that wall, it's a convenient place for the, for the bathroom, for the window.
That means you have to have a vent?
Well, all the bathrooms are vented, yes, definitely, because most of the bathrooms don't have windows, they're interior spaces. I think one of the comments was the windows in the stairwell, which we, which we made more similar to Streetworks, however, the Streetworks positions aren't feasible because they fall at the landings, so we had to shift them to avoid the landings.
Yeah, is there anything we could do with the large panel of ephesus or plaster stood right at those four windows?
Here?
Yeah.
Um, we could break it down a little more.
I know you're going to need a control joint too in there, minimum, right?
Can't we just-
If that's it?
No, I don't have any control joints shown here.
Right.
Not strictly necessary for this size panel, but we could introduce them.
Could you just replicate the green ceramic tile again, in the center of it, or is that too, too random?
Yeah, we, you know, I did study a couple of different options on that.
Yeah, because that wall just seems like a, a blank wall.
Yeah.
Even though you don't see it, the fact is, it, I mean, if you, you know, again, if you want people to engage, let's give them something to look at.
Yeah, I think it might work well, actually, if you use the, the tile on the opposite side.
Yeah, I can, I can symmetric, you know, make a symmetrical panel here.
Right, yeah, I just do it on my plan.
And it'll, you know, it'll help balance this a little more.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, the blank wall doesn't really bother me, it's sort of, the asymmetry, I think, is, but, but yes, by, by doing this panel here, it'll sort of balance it out, so sure, we can do that. We'll trim it on both sides with the wood trims.
Yeah, exactly, right.
The trellis below, if I recall correctly, the Streetworks, we actually had a, that was a planting wall as well, wasn't it?
Yeah, the bottom.
Yeah.
He's not, he showed it on his drawing, he's not showing it on ours.
I'm not, I personally have never been wedded to that planting wall, I, if you left it as the plain tile that you've got, I would be a happy camper too, so that's, that's my two cents on that right there.
That's a lot of tile down there, and, and in actuality, you know, like a Boston ivy will grow there perfectly well, and it'll be, be great.
It'll be, yeah.
One thing we did do was to remove the columns on this, because it seemed to me that this was getting too congested, you have a six-foot wide passage, yet there were columns, so we, we supported this trellis thing off the wall on brackets, so. Going to the other elevation, similar issue here, the window pattern is constrained by the module layout, so we, you know, we, we tried to introduce that tile pattern in here and to create a similar, in the Streetworks, they had developed this kind of bay-like element, we did the same thing, but we associated it with a little piece of roof on the setback wall above, so I, I think this achieves the same kind of picturesque character that was, you know, that was valued in the original design, there's a kind of a looseness to this elevation, and, you know, these little, these elements like the roof and the tile panel all, all work.
Now, in this elevation, we gained windows, how did we do that?
Well, because we added windows to the modules.
Okay.
Because we, you know, we thought this, this elevation actually has a pretty open aspect.
Right, yeah, I agree.
So, it seemed, you know, desirable to add a few windows.
It's an improvement.
I like that.
Yeah, it's an improvement.
So, I think we, you know, we managed to, managed to do alright on that.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay, the rear elevation, this is the elevation facing the parking lot, and it, it's broken because this building is, you know, has a kink in it, so to speak, so rather than laying it all out flat, which is not a realistic view, we, we broke it so you could see the two elevations independently. This elevation, you know, is quite faithful to the Streetworks elevation, you know, we have the, we moved the, the patio doors back into the centered position, so that is all similar to the-
You're, you're missing some wall sconces though.
Um, yes, there will be wall sconces there, I mean, we, we do have those in our, in our design. We didn't show the flower boxes, because not sure, you know, whether the builder's going to put those in, whether the tenants put them in, I mean, if the builder puts them in, then who's going to maintain them, because then you might have an empty flower box, one with the nice stuff in it, so, it's a nice idea, and, you know, that can certainly be added. The other elevation is, has more changes, again, dictated by the module. In this case, as I mentioned earlier, the module is parallel to the facade, unlike other, other parts of the building where the module is perpendicular to the facade, these are two modules that are parallel to the facade. So, we did, we did return this little railing back to the windows, we have three windows instead of four, but that's consistent with our, you know, our, our fenestration approach in the modules. Again, these windows come down within about fifteen, sixteen inches of the floor, the top of the railing is at standard railing height forty-two inches, so if you open that window, you have the protection of the railing there. On the Streetworks design, they had a couple of ornamental panels in these window groups, we, you know, restored an ornamental panel there as well.
I, I think it's a vast improvement, that elevation, yeah, it came out nice.
Yeah, I, I think it works out well, it's organized and it's stable.
It's a lot better than we saw it.
So, I think that's pretty much it, if you have any other comments?
Want to share any other materials with us?
Well, I have the bricks, if you want to-
Just for, so, if you want to help.
These are the two brick panels, and these are both the same colors as originally specified. This is a, a red iron spot, and then a pale sort of oatmeal colored brick.
You're using a different manufacturer again, right?
Sorry?
You're using a different manufacturer as well.
As far as we can tell, this is the right manufacturer, there was a discrepancy in the number on the Streetworks plans.
They call for Summit Brick, and you have, what, X-Tech, what is that?
Uh, this is a Summit Brick, X-Tech is the distributor.
Okay.
So, this is a Summit Brick. This one is a Summit Brick also, but it is a very close match to the other, to the brick that Streetworks had specified, which we had trouble finding.
Okay.
Which was, I believe that was a Cunningham Brick.
Cunningham, right. Oatmeal.
Oatmeal, correct, that looks kind of like oatmeal.
Okay. So, do we want to recap, or you, you, do you understand what we're looking for?
Yeah, I, I think I understand. Yeah, I, I think I understand. We're going to work on the canopy, modify that canopy, I'm going to bring...
Well, if you look at the front elevation, you're going to remove the column, create the, the pier, right?
Right.
Uh, work on the front elevation. You're going, you're going to come back with some tiles, options.
Tiles here?
Tiles here, and also the crestwood, the crestwood, the font.
Right.
I think that was my notes on this one. I got lubers, tiles, stone, and then also the stone, you'll come back with a slightly less textured...
Smoother.
Yeah. Then on the elevation, during two oh three, just add sconces in your, in your elevations?
Yes. Here we'll add sconces on the, on the balconies. We're going to add this panel over here.
For Lincoln Avenue, for the bottom.
Yeah, what are we doing with that?
Giving us another option to look at.
Widening the piers between the windows.
Here.
And/or narrowing the windows.
Right.
And then, on the last page, just showing us the additional panel.
Panel on the...
Yeah, right there.
Mm-huh.
Right.
He has to give us a lighting plan too.
Are you changing the lighting plan from the original design? Have we looking...
No, we're not changing the lighting plan.
Do we, Mr. Williams, do we need to see a new lighting plan, or are, you're going to compare it to the old lighting plan? How do we proceed with that? No, because I think we put... Okay.
The original lighting plan was on the site plan, during, prepared by the, the civil engineer.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Should I open a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Can I make a motion to open a public hearing? Can I have a second, please?
Some more?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Anyone here this evening to speak on a subject? Gary, should we close or keep it open until our next meeting?
It's up to you. I, it's, you can close it, I think. Well, I, I think they're going to make some changes to this.
Correct, so let's keep it open. Yeah, I'll keep it open, okay.
If I may, if the, the... If I may, it appears that the, the location of the windows and the doors and things like that seem to be set, and those were not among your least concerns you have, so I, I hope Norman feels comfortable. Ours are anxious to, to lock in and get started on the construction of the modular units, so I think if you folks are satisfied with the size of the replacement as they've been modified by Norman, we'd like to go ahead, and we're going to be ordering the, the, the actual...
We're going to go ahead and order the units, and then we still have, because we're doing the work for the facade on site, we're still going to come back to you to finalize all the, the other issues, which I'm not calling minor, but the, the issues on the structure and everything that gets placed on the, on the facade, which is the kind of things we're talking about this evening.
Uh, I think, I speak for myself, I think I'm comfortable with the elevations as they are. I think, you know, what we're asking are, you know, just to define certain areas.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable, and nobody, anybody else at this point?
No, I'm comfortable.
If, if you believe it's not going to be, it's not going to frustrate, we're not going to say in the middle of this, somebody made a mistake in either direction, then I'm okay with it too.
Okay.
I just, you know, you know better than I, but...
No, I mean, I'm going to leave it up to them, but I'm going to say that...
You cut out a window in a certain place, and somebody said it should have been, you know, a foot further.
Well, if that, if that's the situation, then they have to come back to you anyhow.
Right. I guess, Norma, would it be possible? I'm sorry. Would it be possible to share the floor plans with us?
Uh, we had, we had discussed that. The, the client is, is, because of issues of marketing and other things like that, he's reluctant to be sharing floor plans now, and in the first place, it's not necessarily within your purview to look at the inside. I understand how the inside affects the outside, but they're reluctant to, to authorize Norman to be sharing floor plans. It's not his fault, and it's not my fault, but that's what I'm dealing with.
Is that an issue?
I don't see an issue.
Okay. Um, alright, anybody else have any questions, any issues?
I think as soon as you can, we should see the, the floor plans, as soon as it's possible.
I've just indicated they're not going to be sharing the floor plans with you.
I think she's talking about...
No, they have to be, they have to be for the final building plans that go to the building inspector, they have to go in, but we're not going to be sharing it with you for architectural review. And I heard Gary seemed to indicate...
Mr. Williams, is there any issue with that? Is there any issue with the applicant not sharing any plans with us? Any floor plans with us?
We're, we're just waiting now for a set to come approved from the state because of changes.
See, the thing...
Do you have, do you have a set of, of the floor plans in your possession?
Yes.
Alright, so if you wish to see it.
And then they're a matter of record if they're in Mr. Williams' office, and you're certainly welcome to look at them frankly.
Now, the thing that concerns me is that now we have modules that are really dictating some changes here and there, so that the floor plan is not necessarily going to be exactly the same as it was in the original plan.
But you hadn't approved the floor plan originally either. Now, what, what the board had approved, and, and what you're authorized to approve, approve under the, under your code, section seven ish one point three says, "The location and dimensions, length, width, floor elevations, height in feet and stories, proposed structures, with a detailed breakdown of all proposed floor space by type of use and floor level." And that's what we have, that you have breakdowns of which floors are used for commercial and retail, and which floors are used for residential. Mr. Williams has the plans if you want to look at them. His plans have already been filed.
And the fact that it's a, a modular building is not going to throw any of those change to, to any extent...
Well, he should have the plans for the modular, is what he said.
The, the elevations were prepared based on putting all the modules together, so that shouldn't change the fenestration or anything else in the building. So I'm, I'm assuming, knowing Norman's a good architect, he, he sat down, put all the modules together, and, you know, he, he built the elevation based on the modules. Is that correct, statement?
Right. Norman had two issues that he started with. One, he had just a facade which he was asked to build the insides for in design and get, build plans that, that something could be built and submitted to Mr. Williams for. And then the second was, his client then told him, "By the way, I want to build it modular." So he then had a second challenge to try to keep this facade as best possible and still be able to build it modular, and that's what I think he's done a nice job doing.
Okay, so I mean, the, the plans are on file, so if we need to see them.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it? Alright, so we'll see you in the next workshop meeting? Alright, so, since we have no other business, I make a motion to close the public hearing? Well, I think you're going to adjourn it. Sorry? I think you agreed to adjourn it till next time.
Adjourn, okay.
Oh, yeah. Because there's going to be changes, so you want to... Yes, or adjourn, okay. Alright. So I make a motion to close the, the board meeting, correct? Can I make, can I make a motion?
For tonight?
Yes.
Sure.
Have a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you can't.
I know.